Uh, okay, thank you everyone for attending the meeting tonight. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? I hear none. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the March thirteenth minutes.
So moved.
Alright.
And I have a corrections on that.
Alright, go ahead.
Related back to the Walker Mountain Road. Of the distance from starting point to finish point. It should read.
For paving.
For paving. Um, it should read. From, is it Bowens Bridge by the hotel? Headed north, just past Wilder's Bridge. That section will be reclaimed. Um, shemmed and overlaid. The rest of the section from, um, approximately. Oh, what's her name? The Airbnb that's there. McCormick's, the one thirty-three, will be shemmed and overlaid.
So basically, you just want to clarify that the one section's gonna be reclaimed and paved, the other section's only gonna be.
Correct, and the original minutes stated is only just a source section, very vague.
As long as good, as George is good with that, I'm good with that in a second.
Yep.
Alright, then, anything else? Are you hearing that? All the paper of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Onto highway.
I've been in touch with John. Cool, is it cool?
Conley.
Conley, he's from Alpine Construction on the cover bridge. Of Kingsley's Cover Bridge, and we're supposed to meet next week. They're looking for a site for their office trailer, and we're trying to just figure that out, look at a couple of different places. And, uh. What I saw, and we're gonna have more onsite visit there. There's mentioning of a road being a one-way, I don't know whose idea that was. I'm thinking it's probably Gorge Road. I'm gonna put it to the select board. If that is the case at all. Is there any chance of actually closing down Gorge Road for that period of time of construction? To give them more room? And less travel. About ninety-five percent of the traffic that travel Gorge Road as a crossroad is out-of-town traffic. We closed it approximately, what, two years ago because?
Of the.
Of the issue. Of the washout from the airport. Um, and that's something I wanted to bring to the select board if we're at all interested.
I wasn't here then, did you get any feedback on?
The neighbors.
From the neighbors?
The people up there loved it.
They did.
Yes, the homeowners did.
The homeowners. Yeah, and once they got used to it, they were used to it, but the road was partly washed out at that time.
So, maybe I misread the plans, when I thought the plans had Gorge Road being one of the one-ways, did I read it wrong?
That's what I mean. Is they're talking about having that one-way, and if they do that, that's gonna be a fiasco, and I don't know which way they're talking, one-way. Headed east or headed west.
How long, how long of a period?
They're starting construction approximately the first of May net. And it was supposed to be November, now they've moved it to February.
February, yeah.
With possible weather issues, possible if, if need be, hopefully open sooner than that.
Remind me when we had the washout, how long was it closed?
All that winter and into spring and early summer.
Yeah.
By the time they got it fixed.
Yeah.
When we.
Markowski did that work.
Yeah.
So maybe, would it make sense to have him come to a meeting and discuss the traffic plan in detail with him? So that we can share our thoughts.
And this is very preliminary, I mean.
Yeah.
I gotta meet with him and.
Yep.
Yeah, and find out, he's kinda, he's not sure. And also with the sign package, it was my understanding that we had to require all the signs. Talking to John, and that's from JP from the state.
Yep.
Talking to John, John said his company is reliable for all the signs and installing them. And we are responsible for detour signs. And to me, detour signs, the only way, the only thing I can think of is put one right at the stop sign at bump road.
Yep.
East Street. And it down to the Route seven.
Well, that would make sense.
So.
Well, if we close that road, um, the obvious thing is, if people that live on that road. Would you, would you close it from there?
We, just like we did last time, we'd close it at that last house on Route seven side.
Yep.
Above, uh, Joe Hans's house, there's one more trailer. And we'd maintain that section through the duration till it's open again.
My concern is that, uh, the quicker we have that discussion with the contractor. The better, because then we could post some signs over there.
Right.
As well as put it on a website to make people aware.
We'll have big, I'll make up some signs down to the garage and say road's gonna be closed such and such a date till February.
Cause when are they, I, I, I know George asked you, but when are they thinking they're starting?
Around the first of May.
Okay, so we got about a month to go.
That's why I'm bringing it before the select board now.
Yeah.
I was hoping we'd have a site visit before now, but we haven't.
Yep.
Well, be proactive, let's, if we have to have a special meeting where we travel up there. You know, the guy could give us onsite.
And I don't know, you know, with the, how it's set up with the crane, or what side of the bridge, or if there's two cranes, I don't know.
Yep.
Where, if you have two cranes, even one crane's gonna take up quite a bit of room.
Alright, I think. Let's see if we can get anything going before our next meeting.
Yeah, we'll be, cause I'll meet with him next week.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want, like I said, if he wants to come down to the meeting.
Or maybe the first one in April.
To that first meeting in April, that still gives you almost a month to.
I'm not.
Post it for.
Not sure if he'd wanna, you know, be here for that meeting, might do virtual or something.
Well, yeah.
Cause he's from Albany and stuff, but.
Put him on the computer or whatever. The only thing I, sometimes with these projects, doesn't the state have to approve the traffic plan and all that garbage?
This is approv- approved from JP, so we'll have to enlighten him with it too when we meet, I'm hoping he'll be at the site meeting.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, if you're gonna change it, it's gotta go through all the process through the state too. Yep. Yep.
Anything else, Cash?
And just that, well, we did have that closed that winter, you wouldn't believe the people that were skiing on that road, cross-country.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, walking it.
Oh, I believe it.
Running. The only thing is with the airport, we have to make sure that they can get access in there for emergency. So what it is, left one block kinda, so a vehicle could get around there.
But if they have construction vehicles parked in the road. Up by the bridge, you're not gonna get through, cause they're not gonna be inclined it.
Right.
So if it's closed, it's closed.
Right.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the road commissioner?
You gonna do any cold patching, there's a couple of pretty good puddles.
We're hoping the, the weather dries up here and warm up this week up on Walker Mountain Road.
Yep.
We've already cold patched, and of course it stays in for about three weeks.
I know you did.
Cops.
Yeah, right.
Try to do the best you can, but, yep.
Well, you just gotta stop ordering all the snow to go.
No, I don't, I'm, I had enough of snow.
Alright, uh, if there's nothing else on road commissioner, approval of select board warrants, they're right here. Everybody sign them.
Robert may not have.
I have, yep.
Okay.
Alright, we'll move right to guests, would you folks wanna introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Remember you're on camera.
Um, so I'm Jane Richards, I am the new principal, well, new this year at Clarendon Elementary School.
And I'm Kaylin Thompson, new principal this year, but was the assistant principal last year at Mill River High School.
Do you have any questions for the select board? Any considerations or?
No, we just, um, wanted to, we wanted to come and introduce ourselves and, um, just acquaint ourselves with all of you and. Being that our schools are part of your town and.
Yeah.
Um, make that connection.
At the high school, we were at one point considering speed signs. Um, I don't know if that's been discussed at any of your board meetings.
Not that I recall, um, I'm talking about on Mill Road for.
Middle Road, yes.
Making a, yeah, and it's something that I'd be interested in hearing more about for, for sure.
Kay, do you wanna talk to that at all or?
Um, I can say we applied for a grant to maybe get a speed feedback sign on Mill Road. Um, that would portray the speed back, so hopefully it would slow down traffic there. Um, there's also been discussion of lowering the speed limit, there has been a traffic study done. Um, so it's been an ongoing discussion.
Just wanna, but we'll keep you in the loop as well.
Absolutely, I definitely could see the need as we have a lot of young drivers coming to.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for coming, and I, I was kind of, uh, semi-serious when I asked you about the supervisor union. In view of the fact that they're also in Clarendon, essentially, and so if you see Brian, I presume he's still there.
Yep.
Tell him I'm disappointed. That's it.
In fairness, we had our invitation extended by a parent who.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, invited us, so it's probably my fault that I didn't look.
No, no, it's, it's okay.
Up by the elementary school, I think I'll mention this, the, uh. Past principal was involved with a conversation, some folks from the fire department were interested in that, uh. I don't know what you call it, picnic area or whatever that green space is.
Yeah, our peace garden.
Yeah, um, about just putting a veteran memorial monument in there. Um, we hadn't done anything on it since we had that conversation, I think it was more towards the end of, uh, last year. And, uh, so if that comes up again, I just wanna make you aware that, what, what. The initial conversation was just a, a path closer to the firehouse, they had the flagpole. And just put a monument there, a veterans monument, so we'll see where it goes, but we're gonna keep you in the loop if that's the case.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay? Anybody have anything else?
I get, how's the walking path doing?
Walking path is, um, well, it's been walked on all winter, so.
That's good.
Yeah, I think we're still using it, um, I'm working right now with the buildings and grounds, uh, the new director of buildings and grounds to. Kind of come up with a plan of how to keep it going, um, so I know that there, he. Rutland County Little League is working with us for the baseball field.
Yep.
Um, and I know he's had some meetings with, uh, representatives from them, and I know we have the back stuff. And everything, so we're just kinda trying to figure out the best way forward, um, and probably gonna need to do some more. Uh, lay some more stone or gravel for the actual path itself, cause it's, it's worn.
Yeah.
Gets used every day though.
That's good.
How's, how's the, uh, parent-teacher group that you had at one point was doing pretty well, are they still doing well?
The PTO?
Yeah.
Oh, so we, for the walking path or just in general?
Well, they were involved in it at one point, yes.
Um, so I, I haven't, the kind of process that was a little slowed and halted when I took over, just. Um, I don't know who the group was per se.
Yep.
Um, but I do know that, uh, I got the, as much information from Fred as I possibly could on it before he left.
Yes.
Um, and right now, we're just trying to go about it and work with, um, the district to try to. Get it to be a more usable space by other people, so it's not just.
Yes, that was the original intent as well.
Yeah, so we're trying to just, we have, Fred, Fred got the project started and it's. It's there and it exists, and so now we're just trying to make sure we have the proper steps involved and in place for the maintenance and upkeep of it all.
I, I was involved in that at the start, so that's my interest, and I'm glad to see that. I mean, it's gonna be a constant issue for, uh, maintenance and all that sort of thing, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm done.
Alright, well, thank you very much for taking your time to come up here, and, uh, hopefully we'll have a good. Discussion group here once in a while and see where we can go with things.
I'm just, I'm just glad, you know, for all the kids that get called down to the office all the time, it's nice to be able to bring the principals down here. Just to get even. It's too bad that, you know, we couldn't give you some kinda discipline. Stay after school or something, maybe you should stay for the whole meeting, that would be, that would be punishment.
I guess maybe. Thank you again.
Yeah, no, we appreciate the invitation.
Is there anything else you have or?
I, I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, just really looking forward to continuing the relationship of, of us working together and, and putting faces and names and things like that. So, um, thanks for extending the invite, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah, anytime.
Appreciate it.
Alright, any public comments?
You may miss something.
Most people don't say. Well, thank. We're not shooing you out either.
You're welcome to say.
Yeah.
Thank, yes.
Alright, old business, transferring remaining ARPA money, you wanna speak to that Heidi?
Um, sure, so the, Katie and I went back and reviewed. Uh, past meetings to determine if it was, um. Acceptable to move the additional funds, uh, that were transferred of the ARPA money into the general fund. To then move those into the new buildings fund. And that was never designated in a meeting, they were just, um, transferred from the ARPA to the general fund. To offset expenses, so the question was if you wanted to, um, take that one hundred and seventy dollars and six cents. To move that as well into the, uh, new municipal buildings fund or whether.
Was, how much was it?
One hundred and seventy dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That was quick.
Perfect, thank you.
Who seconded which one?
I did.
George.
Say all of them.
We were anxious to get it done.
In case you don't know who that was, see this picture right here?
Yeah, did you see my, uh, they don't have a name sign for me, I guess.
I saw it moved.
Yeah. But it's a good lightness.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, no comment, let's see, purchasing policy drafting.
Aha.
And we have. Yes, we are.
Do we have proposed, like, I, like, I, I've been looking through, I just don't see any proposed changed language, and that's the way we left it last time. That we were gonna come back to it when we had proposed language.
Okay, so I will jump in, and then Katie can take over from there. So, Cash, Katie and I got together to discuss the policy, and we emailed out to the board a list of questions. That we were looking for answers on as far as directing us as to, um. How we should move forward rather than just, it, it, we need the field narrowed as to what you all are looking for. So, those questions were emailed out to you guys and, um. Basically said that we would be looking for answers to those questions at this meeting.
And then we can come up with more.
Right, and so we would take the answers that you give us tonight, we would reconvene, Cash, Katie and I. Put something together as a proposed and, and put it to you to the floor at the next meeting. But until we have those answers, um, we're at a standstill, so I don't know if Katie, if you wanna.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Take over on those questions.
I would suggest we just take and, uh, do these questions one at a time and see what we can do for a quick, for a summary of them. This one right here, we. She's talking about right there.
This one?
Yep, that's what she's talking about.
You sure?
I am, okay.
Does the board want a concise policy?
My answer to that is, let's use the Kisser Principle wherever possible, keep it simple.
Stupid.
You got a right part too.
Do I hear any other ideas? From other board members?
I would go along with George, if we can keep it simple, it's better.
I think one of the. Things that we had as a topic in, for discussion, previous discussions, was the amounts, isn't that correct, Heidi?
Yes.
And when I'm looking at here, this is the up-to-date, it's three thousand?
Um, no, I did not update that.
Okay.
Cause I figured we'd go through these questions, and then I'd come up with a draft for you for the next meeting, but all the updates.
Alright, so does the board want something more detailed?
I say no.
I agree.
I want, I, I would stick with what we have and make the alterations like what we discussed last meeting and move on.
That also answers the next question, what does a purchasing agent or is designee, designee mean? So if we're keeping what we already have.
I mean, the issue, the issue of purchasing agent is, is quite simple. One, it's, we're too small an organization to even think about that kind of management. But the idea is that whoever has a final say is the person that's responsible for what's happening with the budget line. And so if you have somebody that doesn't have responsibility of the budget line making purchases, that might be a question in my mind.
So then, is it sim- as simple as changing the verbiage from purchasing agent or is it, or it's designee to department head?
Yeah, something of that nature would work.
Sure, why not?
Perfect, thank you.
Because.
Talked about that too.
When we finalize what those amounts would be, that's also the board given authority. Um. To that individual. And discuss language about thresholds on commodities price per ton. Here again, I think that's the same answer would be, right? In, in Cash's case, for instance, he knows what he needs and.
So the, the discussion surrounding this came from, um. You all as a board currently approve the dollar per ton, for instance, for salt.
Mm-hmm.
It's a high dollar amount per ton. So, the thought behind this, um, was do you. Come up with some sort of a threshold on commodities price per ton yard, gallon? That if it exceeds X amount of dollars, then Cash would need to come to the board for approval like with salt.
Mm-hmm.
But anything below that, he would certainly do his due diligence to make sure he was getting the best deal on the commodity. But he wouldn't need to, um, be formal in approaching the board for approval for that tonnage, the price per ton. Um, so.
He does that anyway.
Right, but it's not currently in our policy.
Well, then we should put it in our policy.
Right.
And that's what.
So, but then the question is, what is that threshold going to be, that's the question, one of the questions. Um, do you want that at fifty ton, fifty dollars a ton yard ga- like. How, what, what do you want that threshold to be that he'll be required to ask the board for your?
When we do our budgets, don't we have this discussion? We have.
Not per ton price, we don't really talk about that at that time.
It's kind of like, for the purpose of like gravel pricing and, uh, paving, like. What, what do you wanna say a formal bid for, like, salt we get, you know?
Paving we get.
Well, like the magic is like that, we order four thousand gallons at a time, but is that dollar forty-eight a gallon or something like that? We're looking at, I don't know, I've got a figure in front of me, around six thousand bucks, that trail load.
Yeah.
Buy something and.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I would suggest that we kinda see what our road commissioner, how, what he feels comfortable with in terms of his responsibility. I mean, it seems to me that he's probably got something in mind in terms of what, how he would feel comfortable in operation.
Well, as a guide, work with a budget that was proposed. Not guarantee and just spending that budget at any time just because it's there. But within reason of the product needed. And if that time frame.
I mean, obviously, if you have a weather situation where you may need some sooner than you anticipated, you, you gotta get it.
Right.
So is, is it as simple as, like, even if it's this time, I realize salt's not this time of year, but when you're getting ready to go into. I'm, I'm assuming most of your gravel and stuff like that's getting updated now, probably costs are getting updated.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Jeff to call me from Pike for the prices hand and stuff like that, per ton. And then I'll, he, he'll ask for, also, he'll ask for an estimate of how many tons we're looking for.
But like, Cosella sent out us their pricing for this year.
Yeah, they've already.
If that's what you mean?
Well, cause.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is it as simple as you put in this that every, I don't know, April, every April. A chart will be submitted to the select board to approve updated per ton pricing. Like, let's not, let's not, let's not make it terribly difficult, that, that's pretty simple, it's just a spreadsheet that has the per cost of each tonnage.
They give us the, like.
Like, wanting not to exceed per item?
Yeah, and then the board just approves it, so it's all, it's above board and everybody can see it, and it's approved and done.
The problem with the different products is quality, big time. And Heidi and I have had that and Katie dis- discussion where. We got it out of one quarry because it's close, uh, prices revelling the same, but we ended up redoing. That road with, with the other product because of the quality of.
Are we Robert saying that we would get like a price list from Wallingford Crestone, and we'd get a price list from Pike, and we get a price list from. Cosella, and we submit them all to the board, and the board would say, yep, okay, looks good, approved, and you're done for the year, and you don't have to ask for approval on those items.
Oh, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
That way.
Okay.
And actually, I.
That falls under the George principle, keep it simple.
That's right.
We've already got Charlie Brown's castle in which we don't hardly use at all, but. I remember right.
Cosella came in the mail, I'll give it to you.
That just come, and then I pick up, I actually got an orange card of Wallingford Crestone.
So you compare those prices?
Hmm.
And get, get value for the better project, product?
You gotta look at the, the product itself.
Yeah.
Because they vary from quarry to quarry, of how they manufacture and stuff, so.
There again, I mean, we've, I mean, the road commissioner's got the responsibility of keeping the roads, you know, up to par. Then he also needs to have the ability to make the judgment on quality and need and all the rest of it. And, and if he screws up, then we'll hang him by his feet, you know?
That's good.
Gotta watch his needle.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Need trouble. Um.
And like I said, pick the time period that makes most sense, is it, you know, by May first?
Yep.
Is it by, you know, like.
The quarries already got the prices out.
So there you go, so. So maybe it's by, maybe it's by the second meeting in April, or something like that, you know, each, each year. The board will just, so that it's above board and.
Yeah.
It's been approved.
So, just from my understanding, are you approving that he can purchase from either place, or he can't go above a certain price limit? Per item?
Oh, he's, he's gonna look that over and then come back to the board. Um, maybe with comparison prices. But it was his recommendation of the product itself, even though it might cost ten cents more. This is a better deal for the money we're spending.
For the most part, they're pretty competitive. Price per tons, but you, I'm telling you, the quality of material from the different processing to a dust.
Yeah, well, you're out there dealing with it, we're not.
All depends on the stone too. There you go. I mean, dolomite, dolomite is a lot better than marble.
To me, it seems like it would be a pretty simple, just, you know, for, for like a spreadsheet that says, okay. And you, you compare, you look at the prices, and you know this one over here is fifty-five bucks a ton, this one's fifty bucks a ton. But that one's not as good as this one, so you're looking for approval that you can expend up to fifty-five dollars a ton.
Like shirt pack is ten ninety a ton down south on.
And if that's the best product, and, you know, we're not, we're not gonna exceed, and just use round numbers, not gonna exceed eleven dollars a ton this year, you know, or whatever, just so it's been approved. If it's.
Providing the quarry stays there and don't.
Well, and, and if prices change, it comes back, you know, it comes back and the chart gets updated.
I get, I grab the charts.
I, I agree with Robbie there. Art, how are you feeling about this?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. And he can, if he wants to, like, let's say he's gonna do the ball field parking lot and he wants to buy the cheaper stuff.
Yep.
You know, he should be allowed to buy the cheaper stuff for some projects and, um, we can approve the more higher priced stuff or.
Other stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
That, I mean, that's why I think it, it's just, it's a not, it's a not to exceed type sheet. Like, this is, this is what we're approving for right now. If in the middle of the summer comes back and, oh, they raised their price a buck, hey, I need you to go back and I need, you know, this price went up a buck, just making you aware of it, we just need you to upgrade, you know, update the chart or whatever. That seems reasonable. Be simple.
And the last one is, are committees and commissions required to act under this purchasing policy or function within their own budget? And that's essentially what we're just, the conversation we just had.
Well, this is talking about like, so.
The community center, the rec committee, those committees.
Which, we've always, we've always just turned the funds over to them and they're able to manage their own budget. So I guess it depends on how micromanaging we want to get involved, which.
The reason we came up is because there are multiple surrounding towns who, or there are surrounding towns who do have their committees follow or fall under the town's purchasing policy as a whole, but there's others who don't even mention it in their purchasing policy. So it's kind of your.
Well, most of those committees aren't gonna spend, you know, more than what we're gonna set for our regular prices for three thousand dollars, that kind of stuff.
If their budget's three thousand, that's about what they spend.
Yeah, but most of their um purchases are smaller than that.
Because they're not spending three thousand at once.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the community center is probably the larger budget.
Yeah, so the community center is the larger budget, but I, historically speaking, whenever there's been a large project going on for the community center, I feel like that board has been very forthcoming to this board um to kind of ask for permission for those bigger dollar.
Yep.
The big projects.
Projects anyways.
Yeah, well, so I don't see a problem with forcing them to, you know, make them be under our policy.
I mean, the only way it would affect them is if things have to go up to bid, right? Cause otherwise it's just, we just list quotes, like.
Which again, going back and even back when George was involved with the community center.
Yep.
We always had typically, community center representatives came in, said, this is what needs to be done. There was a few years that you did cinder block walls in the basement or you did different things and we got prices from these people and this is the best price. We're recommending, we, you know, and it was always just kind of done upfront with the board, so.
Again, I don't think we've, we haven't had a problem with it. Um, this would just make it a formality that, okay, so prior to this update, if they had a project that was over five thousand dollars, they technically didn't have to approach the board. But now it'll be a formal requirement that they do have to go out for bid and approach the board.
Yep.
Well, there's certainly no harm in doing that. And I don't think it would cause a whole lot of added burden on them.
No, I think it's good.
I don't think so. As I said, I mean, the community's communication has always been.
Yeah.
That, that is protection for the in- individual.
That's true.
Yep.
Now, let, let's uh just a little sidetrack in, in terms of a, a, a audit, in terms of a formal audit. Is there any chance that anything that we've discussed would be any kind of a finding or?
Um, no. So one of the things that I've done in reviewing our current policy is I, I pulled a report that had invoices from July first to current date, um, which covers our current fiscal year to see how any of those invoices would fall into the purchasing policy and then how they would um with some of the updates, like the thresholds that you folks gave us last meeting, um, how that affected them to see if an external auditor were to come in and pull a sample, if we would be able to say, yes, we followed this policy um with these updates. And it looks like with the thresholds that it would be spot on and that we would be able to do that no problem. Um, at the original lower thresholds, that could have become an issue, but I think if we make those updates, then.
Okay.
Then we're pretty much, we're pretty much updating the policy. Not really, I don't want to say we're tightening it up, but we're, we're trying to um.
Get to a more modern.
Fine tune it, but to what, what we're already doing for best practice. Um, and then trying to tighten up, um, I know that I've had a couple of conversations with a few of you about, for instance, the bid process and how um through the years that we haven't really had a place to look to in the policy of how that should work. Um, and so we're also going to be working through that um and hopefully get some verbiage and, and get that put into the policy as well so that for these contractors who are looking to bid on jobs for us, that they know that from now on, particularly once this policy is approved, that the bid process for the town of Clarendon is gonna be the same over and over and over again consistently. Um, cause I know in the past that that maybe hasn't always been the case. So we want to tighten that up.
Mr. Chair, my recommendation is with what we're, our question and answer reveal that we advise the committee to give us something next time.
Alright, did you want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Are you hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So we'll look to see something at our next meeting.
And good work for the folks that have been working on this. I, much appreciated.
I want to thank you for those who have come forward with their recommendations too, um, who've been following this. It's been nice to have some feedback.
Alright, under new business, we did uh receive a letter from Joe Peterson. I usually ask Robbie to read it, but.
I'll just make a motion that we go ahead and seal this up. He's been tree warden multiple times before, so make a motion that we approve Joe Peterson as the tree warden for the upcoming term.
Second.
Any further discussion? And he is willing by opinion of his letter, so all those in favor of motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, MGRP annual report.
Is it MRGP or is it MG?
Uh, MRGP.
Boy, I'm, you know, don't confuse the old man. You're on top of it, George.
Everything's in order for it?
Yeah, um, so we were just verifying that we updated all of the roads that we worked on and updated that in the quarter, which we've done that. And then that we had our twenty twenty-two goal, we've done that. Um, there's also a fee that goes with it, so I think it's eleven hundred twenty-five.
I have to sign this, right?
That's what it says. It says ranking official. So are you ranking or are you just ranked?
Uh, oh, I took a shower.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Uh, can you add that in the select board chair sign?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion to approve a liquor tobacco license by Art, seconded by Cash. Any further discussion?
And tobacco.
That too. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Alright.
Anyone opposed?
Apparently we're really smoking tonight.
Oh, God. Katie, was uh, is there something where I can sign at or?
No, they just need formal approval and we're already done on that now.
Okay, good enough. Uh, Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement Discussion.
Has this changed at all since the last time we talked about it? It's my question.
It comes up every year, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we round file this request and do not entertain it.
There's second?
Second.
Alright, is there any discussion around this? Alright, hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
It probably stands to reason just to mention, so the public knows what we're round filing. This is an agreement that other places would have the rights to come and take our equipment and use it in the event of an emergency. And this board's policy has always been that we will work directly with the towns around us if there was an emergency. And that we're not gonna sign on to an agreement that our equipment could be literally picked up and taken someplace else.
Within the county.
Yeah.
Without our, without, without our own operators.
That's right. So we, we have basically, since I've been on this board, this has always been denied. And we've always had an agreement with, you know, whether it be Wallingford Tinmith or whoever, we've always had good relationships with the towns around us, that we would have a direct conversation if something came up.
Alright, Heidi, do you have any report?
No.
Kevin, do you have anything cemetery committee? Nothing? Guy still hasn't attacked that tree yet?
Well, I'll talk to Katie about.
Okay. Katie, do you have anything?
Um, I just have a couple of things um from following up from last meeting. Uh, I was waiting to hear back from the CBA members. Um, Bronson, Spencer and John Colvin will continue and Gail Cozy did not want to be reappointed. Um, she did serve though for twenty years on that board, so I will send her a thank you note. Um, as well as Ashley Robinson, cause she served for a year on rec or community center. Um.
She did not serve for a year on the rec, there's a community center.
I think she was on it for a year.
She was never appointed. She was never appointed by this board.
For what? What was that?
For the community center.
And that was who?
Ashley Robinson.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
She was never officially appointed, but if you want to send her a thank you letter, go ahead. But we never had any meetings. She was never at any meetings. She was never officially appointed.
I guess I wasn't aware of that. I thought that was not a select or anything. But, so, no thank you note, yes, thank you.
Well, I agree with Art that, you know, why not? I mean, it's not gonna hurt to send somebody a letter that says thank you. What harms it gonna do?
Well, but, so again, if he's saying she never even attended a meeting, it's, you're, you're thanking somebody for not, for not really.
Well, I guess that's the question. Was she ever there?
But so Art just said he wasn't.
She wasn't there?
She was never at any mea- we never had any meetings. We didn't have any.
Good.
You, you twisted it.
I misunderstood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm old. You have to give me a little patience.
Let's move on.
Okay, um, Cash and I are working on an energy control procedure for the garage, um, which our insurance has encouraged us to do cause it's required by um BOSHAP. Um, so we've met with our insurance guy and been working on that. Um, and then ARPA reporting is after March thirty-first, I need to report on um expenditures between the period of April first twenty twenty-two and March thirty-first twenty twenty-three. So, I guess I'm letting you know that I will be doing that in the month of April and basically just reporting um on the like fire truck that we gave money for um the greater, like basically where we've obligated the money to.
Right, from the ARPA.
Can, can you look back to the energy control thing and explain what they're looking for?
Sure.
Just curious.
It is a pain in the neck.
Just, it just seems ludicrous to me, so that's why I'm wondering what it is.
Um, so it's a control of hazardous energy in vehicle maintenance operations. Basically, we have to write out how everything becomes to a zero energy state when working on a vehicle for safety.
For an example, every piece of quorum had thought a piece of paper. So, okay, let's take the loader for example.
Yep.
The bucket needs to be on the ground, all relief pressure. If you're working on electrical, battery disconnected, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um.
So stuff that should be common sense, we now have to put in paper, basically.
Uh, yeah, I think somebody needed a job, so I dreamed up this crap, that's alright.
Hey, I got no problem with you saying it that way. That's pretty much what it is.
Like your safety data sheet, uh, like program, it's along those same lines.
And basically it's gonna sit on a three leaf notebook at the garage. If BOSHAP ever comes, we could say, here it is. That's it.
Okay, so it's under control as far as you're concerned?
Yeah, it's been a pain in the neck for me to figure out what they wanted and I did it, but Wade come, come down and it wasn't. It was and it wasn't properly worded in their words, but it said the same thing.
But it, it's a great example of creating more work for somebody. I mean, that's what.
I wrapped my head around that thing, trying to figure out actually what they were looking for from the hydrox to electric, everything.
It's part of our um like loss control stuff that we've been working on and this has been like medium priority for a few years, so.
It's caused by somebody doing something stupid.
Exactly.
And getting hurt.
Exactly.
I presume they had a complicated procedure for oil and all that.
That's what I'm saying.
Somebody sitting at a desk up in Montpelier.
Like when you bring your truck in, it cools down.
How many times have you stepped in it?
You know?
Yep.
Drive shaft.
Never.
Well, I have.
Never.
And it's like, now that I understand it, it isn't bad to figure out, once I had the first sheet done. But I had to visualize each piece of quorum, what the hazard was of any source of energy.
What do your troops think about all this down there?
Same I just said. What the heck?
Basically, part of the procedure as well is like they are supposed to be, like after we have it done and completed, we have to go over it with them, like give them a training on it. Um, so Wade said he could come and do that with them.
So they're already aware, there's Wade's gonna come down for an hour, half hour, hour, to say, okay, just to walk through.
Yep.
Okay, sorry I asked, move on.
Alright, uh, Robbie, do you have any?
I'm just curious. No, I do not have anything to make.
Art, do you have any?
Nope.
I'm over, George?
Yes, I have several.
Alright.
Number one, last meeting, and I'm looking for the notes from last meeting here. Uh, where did I put it? This looks like it here. It says minutes, that's a good clue. And we were talking about board concerns. And it was, we were talking, a couple people mentioned voter turnout. Anybody remember that?
Robert did.
Yep.
Big time.
And yes, and then somebody else did. I think it was Art maybe. Does that sound right?
Art.
My question to this board, including myself, is, okay, yep, we understand that that's what happened. And it may be a, a symptom of ongoing turnouts in some respects. So, as a board, do we want to try to do anything about it? Or do we just want to say, yep, that's what's going on and we don't need to worry about it, so be it and not worry about it, so.
Like, like what suggestions do you have that we're gonna do about it?
How can we entertain more interest?
Well, that would be the question and I guess we certainly wouldn't be able to answer that this evening at this time. But do we want to have some kind of a group or something to cogitate on it or do we want to just ignore it? That's my question.
There are parties in this country that have spent billions and trillions of dollars to try to get voter turnout. And this is what we get. So what is the five members of this board gonna do that they haven't?
Well, I don't know unless you put some energy in it.
I think turnout is a case of, if there's a popular agenda out there, then people are gonna turn out. If there's just the average, yeah, okay, oh, I gotta go out to dinner, I can't come down here and do this.
On the other hand, Mike, don't interrupt, but we got a neighbor in town or city that had a big turnover with what you just said, and they still didn't have a turnout. A big turnout.
What, I'm confused. Do I know what you're talking about?
Yeah, mayor, the mayor's race in Rutland.
Yeah, he's, he's just commenting that there was a big race in Rutland and people still didn't come out for it.
Right.
Gotcha.
You know?
Maybe the people didn't think it was that important? Maybe the people didn't think it was that important. Or maybe their thinking was, well, he's going to get reelected, he's been in office for nine hundred years. I don't, I don't back to.
Peop- people have their minds on other thing. Their family, their finances, their survival at this time, with everything going on in this world today.
Right.
If you did something to raise the taxes in this town, I'll bet you get a turnout then.
Mm-hmm. Well, where we might get a turnout is this reappraisal stuff that's coming up.
Could be.
I mean, that that might shake up a few trees, I would guess. Anything more on that? Uh, what's your name again?
Are you, well, reappraisal, we we've made it through this last time, we're not on the list.
Well, we will be, I think, next week, or next year, rather.
Ends March, ends Friday, the new three-year.
Yes.
Average ends Friday, we'll.
Because we got our letters last, we got our, all of the board members, we all got our letters sta- stating that we did not have to have reappraisal.
Right, but what he's referring is probably next December, January. The average ends Friday, we will probably be ha- Eight, we're only two point something percent above the, but that's what you're referring to.
Yep.
But there's also pending legislation in Montpelier right now that could turn the whole thing upside down, so.
Yes, I I'm aware of that, but maybe another time we discuss that one, because that's going to be an issue. So what I was getting at is if they come up with the, they have this statistical approach, which Art, I think, is familiar with from years back.
Mm-hmm.
That they might have decided to try to do that, which I'm sure that a lot of people will ask for rationale and defense of whatever happens, just my guess. Because of the uh, one that we had back in uh, oh nine, we had probably a hundred and some odd people, I don't know if Art remembers that, but I know you do, Mike. Come in here and uh, they were not happy, so. Anyways, that's just in the future.
Could I make a quick comment?
Certainly.
The gorgeous thing about voter turnout, and I've all said this, have voter day the day before they do their taxes.
So.
Or day after they do their taxes. I turned that around, George.
Yeah, that's, that's when they should vote on the budget.
That's when they had to vote on the budget, everything.
Day after they get to, because everybody comes in and says, oh, they complain about their taxes. Well, did you vote?
They forgot about it, because it's five months later when you go to vote and approve everything.
There's some validity to that statement.
Yes, I would think that you're right.
Could we legally do that?
No.
No.
Probably not.
Nope.
No.
It's a good thought, but legally, couldn't do it.
It'd probably be easier to change the day when everybody pays their taxes, so March.
We went through that with that six month thing.
Yes.
Changing it. I can't remember how it went. Was it almost like calendar versus?
Yeah, it was calendar versus, calendar year versus fiscal year.
Right, but then you ended up paying twice, right?
Well, you paid us six months.
Amount, and then you paid another, it kind of catch you up.
Yeah. I mean, we even had a, so we even had a special town meeting that nobody showed up for to speak of.
I mean, for our, the way our fiscal year runs from July to June, so then you would be running from July all the way to March.
Yep.
Running the majority of your year with no money.
With no money.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just not.
You can't handle that, Heidi?
I I may be pretty resourceful, but.
Not rich.
Ah, I don't think we can handle that, no.
Let me lend the town a full milk.
So anyways, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I I think that I I might in the future with uh, propose some discussion on this again, that you folks can all move and hiss at. I'm done with that one.
Oh, good, because you had a ten or fifteen minute time limit that you said.
I stopped.
Okay.
I stopped.
Uh, Cash, you have?
I'm good.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done and done.